Good evening, I'd like to call for your board to the St. Charles City Council meeting for Monday, March 20th, 2023. Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Vanguard? Bancroft?
Here.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Here.
Werbal?
Here.
Besner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Sokitis?
Here.
Calameres?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Alderman Petrella.
We ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work. Remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good. Amen.
Thank you. Well, real counsel here for Nancy, please join us at the front. In the flag. And whenever you're ready, you can lead us in the flag.
(Music) [S13] (Music) Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. We do not have any presentations this evening, so Mr. Bancroft, the omnibus vote, please.
Hi, and just to confirm, it looks like C1 is off the omnibus.
Sorry, which one, Todd?
C1.
C1.
C1, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as reflected in our Monday, March 20th, 2023 city council agenda.
Second.
Move by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine, pretty regular agenda item every six months, motion to continue to maintain confidentiality of minutes of the city council, government operations committee, government services committee, and planning and development committee executive session meeting minutes for previous meetings.
Move.
Move by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any old business under new business. Chief will be here to give us a little bit of some information and answer any questions for item A. Recommendation to approve a proposal for a D8 liquor license application for Fox Foodie LLC. Doing business at Fox Down Cooking located at 131 South First Street.
Your Honor, before going forward, I'd like the record to reflect that I'm recusing myself for statutory reasons.
Nancy, Lencioni, if you'd look at it, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, you don't have deja vu with this rose before you last month, and it was approved. It's coming back before you this evening because the LLC had to be dissolved, refiled under a different LLC. The petitioners here, Jessica Bridges, disappeared earlier this evening at the Liquor Control Commission and advanced forward with a five-zero recommendation. Once again, it's just a new LLC that was previously approved, was dissolved based on a corporation change, and is now back before you. I am requesting an in-kind waiver of the new fees, and the business is already operational. Jessica or myself can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Chief?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move by Paylighter, seconded by Werbal. Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, and Mr. Colby will be here if anyone has any questions, but item B is motion to approve a resolution authorizing publication and sale of the 2023 City of St. Charles official zoning map. Any questions for Mr. Colby?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move by Paylighter, seconded by Besner. Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports government operations, Mr. Sokitis. Anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Government services, Mr. Besner?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Planning and development, Mr. Weber?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I have three items that we wanted to discuss. The first item, C1, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the award of construction bid to Martsum Construction for the First Street East Plaza Expansion Project Phase Two. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Move by Weber, seconded by Lencioni. Any comments yet, Mr. Taylor?
Yep. Um, I know I'm not going to change any minds, but I do want to very much make my position very clear. With the total project cost of over $5 million, I do feel strongly that the city should be responsible for the First Street portion of the project, 1.2, which puts the city total with Phase One, Phase Two at about half. Uh, and then for total contribution, and then with the remaining balance, I'm confident that the St. Charles Initiative could, uh, should and could complete their fundraising for that, for the A portion of it. And all along, I have said when the funding was looking questionable, that city should, if necessary, jump in and pay for half. This is half. And the other thing is that the A was, you know, pretty much the initiative's baby. They designed it, they, you know, moved it forward. So maybe continue it being their project moving forward. That's just where I stand. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, do we have a motion by Weber, seconded by Lencioni? Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
No.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
No.
Calameres?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we move to items two and three, I believe the landlord would like to make a comment regarding item two and three on the planning and development portion of the agenda. Thank you.
My name is Curtis Hurst. I live at 5A East Main Street, St. Charles. Good evening. Frontier Development has always maintained that our goal was to be a collaborative partner with the city to bring developments that benefited the entire community. Tonight, we have an opportunity to demonstrate our commitment to that objective by executing this license agreement, extending the use of privately owned land for public parking. We've already done so, in fact, but we need to express our frustration with the way the process was handled. It starts with pointing out the contradiction of the city denying flagship the use of the public land adjacent to their business in the same configuration that has been allowed over the past several years, and then in the very same meeting, holding another business, Pollyanna, outdoor dining experience captive contingent on Frontier's willingness to make privately owned land available to the city for public parking, free of charge. If we were to take the same stance as the city on a license agreement and declare that no private land will be used for public benefit, that would take approximately 80 spaces out of the already challenged parking stock in the city. This is not collaboration. Equally frustrating is the lack of communication through this process. Why did the alderman who voted no on the flagship license agreement not reach out to the business owner to try and find a solution that worked for both parties? Why did they not offer any explanation in the meeting? Have they reached out since then to discuss their position and seek a solution, or do they maintain that they don't owe him an explanation? On April 12th, 2021, Frontier Development presented a comprehensive plan to the Planning and Development Committee for the east side of the river that would do away with the need to continue trading license agreements. The concept plan's design intent included streetscape enhancements, and it allowed the business owners an opportunity to properly invest in outdoor dining experiences. The city could then explore options to improve permanent parking conditions, including a parking deck with approximately 50 additional parking spaces on a contiguous parcel of land, all the while improving the overall amenity space to be enjoyed by the entire community. The property values and square footages of the proposed parcels being traded in the concept plan are very similar. Again, there was no effort made to explore this prior to last week's meeting. Instead, aldermen who explicitly and on the record supported this proposal two years ago disagreed, disregarded efforts to reach a mutually beneficial, long-term solution, and left two small business owners and the property owner scrambling to react by denying a license agreement and holding another one captive in exchange for free, unrestricted public access to private land without the benefit of a conversation before, during, or after the vote. Common ground will not be found without actively engaging both sides of an issue. The council does, in fact, owe all of their constituents and business operators within their ward the dignity of a collaborative and transparent conversation. In closing, we are going to try and, we are going to continue to try and do what we think will be mutually beneficial to us and the community. There will be disagreements about what that is, but our hope is that going forward, we find a council that is more willing to collaborate with everyone in the community. We believe that as elected officials, it's your responsibility to make sure you're communicating with everyone you represent, especially if you don't disagree, especially if you don't agree with them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you very much. Um, C2, I'm looking, I want to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a temporary license agreement between the City of St. Charles and Pollyanna Brewing Company.
Second.
Move by Weber, seconded by Werbal. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Item C3, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a First Amendment to parking easement agreement between the City of St. Charles and St. Charles Morris LLC.
Second.
Move by Weber, seconded by Werbal. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Hey, Lightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, item 10 is public comments. So if there's anyone that would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium and state your name.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Um, I just wanted to, um...
Please state your name, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gordon Galloway. I live in Towns of Fox Chase. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Kurt said about the council listening to the city. When I was here a few weeks ago and they voted to turn down flagship, it seemed like the majority of the people in the room, the majority of people in the city, supported it. And there were three reasons that were discussed about not supporting it. One was traffic, one was parking, and one was fairness. So the Wednesday after, I did my own personal traffic study. I went and I sat outside of flagship from 7:45 a.m. to about 8:30 a.m., the busiest part of the work commute for the city. And you know how many cars passed me? I was sitting right outside flagship and there was five controversial parking spaces, zero, zero cars. So I said, well, that must be a fluke. I went on Thursday, did it again, got my iced coffee, sat there, zero cars. So traffic, it's not, doesn't seem to be an issue, at least during morning rush hour. Parking spaces, I think we know. There's lots of parking in that area. We just partnered with Kurt to expand the parking and use some private land for public parking. So the five spaces along Pollyanna, not an issue. The fairness part is the one that kind of got to me at the last event. I guess the fairness question was about approving public land, right, city land for private use. Uh, that's done all over the city. It's happened for the last three years with no negative impact to the city. In fact, it's been a very positive impact to the city. And I think if you come to a conclusion, as I sat in the meeting and listened to the comments and listened to the votes, there must be some other influence. It's not the common sense or the logic of approving flagships, outdoor dining. So you come to the conclusion that, well, there must be outside influences somewhere that caused the vote to go the way it did. And then you ask yourself the next question. It must have been somebody who didn't want flagship to succeed, some competitor that didn't want flagship to succeed, or more than what. And when you think about that, what that's going to do to the people like myself, and maybe some other people in this room or in the city, they're not going to take their business and be forced to go from flagship to one of those businesses that may have influenced the board to go against that vote and vote it down. We're going to go somewhere else. Our second choice won't be another place that may have done that to the flagship and influenced the vote. It may even be outside, some percentage of it might be outside the city where there's also very nice outdoor dining. So not only in my comments that I made the other Monday was that this is good for the city, it generates revenue, and we need the tax revenue. Obviously, we're losing businesses. Coca-Cola's moving, right? President Ron is gone, Starbucks is gone. So we need the revenue, we need the tax revenue, we raise sales taxes. But this is going to not only maybe cost the jobs that it cost flagship, which was an amazing thing, it cost some jobs when you said no to that vote, but it's going to move people out of the city to go somewhere else. So I just want to make that point. Hopefully, the next votes that come up like this, there'll be a little more interaction between the people of the city and maybe some more open minds to listen to the people. So thank you very much for the time. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Uh, Steve Mayer, 1701 Evergreen Street, resident taxpayer, business owner at flagship on the Fox and Duke's Northwoods. Think I'd like to start off on a positive note and thank Alderman Paylightner for meeting with me two weeks ago. I thought we had a great talk. Talked about an hour and a half, you know, things went into your grandkids, and I think we just connected on a, on a great level. I wish my two aldermen, Mr. Werbal, Mr. Petriello, wish we could have had a conversation too. You knew all winter you weren't going to vote against me. You've never been small business owners. You don't know what it's like to employ 135 people. I might be the largest employer in your ward, and you didn't have the decency, or the wherewithal or the concern about 135 of your residents in this town. I am fuming as I sit here right now and look at both of you. I've been fuming all week. This is not how aldermen who represent their city conduct business. David, even your prayer before it, before our meeting tonight, said the same exact thing. Now, I can take you guys voting against us if you have legitimate reason. As the gentleman said before, this whole town knows what your reason is, and it'll come out on April 4th. It will. The voters have heard it. Everybody in this town knows what went on. It's not a secret. You need to open up your lines of communication with your business owners, with your residents. You guys are here for the city, not for any ego, not for, you know, back alley deals or whatever it may be. You guys are here for the city, and that includes my 135 employees in your ward. I'll leave on that note before I say anything that'll get me in trouble. But I am disgusted by you two. I came from Chicago into a town like St. Charles, and I loved it for four years. Saw nothing but great things. And then I saw what you two did to me last week. Absolutely disgusted and ashamed that you guys sit on that council.
Good evening. Greg Taylor, 211 South Third Avenue. Um, I just want to dispel the notion that Walnut's not a busy street. Um, I too did my own study, and I just, you know, the Chronicle ran a, an ad, a paper, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, an article on this issue, and the picture on the article shows eight cars on it. And then just this weekend, uh, two times, there was eight cars on Walnut, a van, and a trailer on, I think it was Friday. Later on that day, there was 10 vehicles, and on my walk over here today, 10 vehicles on Walnut, everything taken. It is not an alley. It is not a loading dock. It's a busy street. And some people might say, well, that's just because it was March Madness. Well, heck, there's always something going on in the city, and that's great. You know, there's Labor Day, it's Memorial Day, it's St. Patrick's Day, it's, um, it's, heck, it's any nice day between Thursday and Sunday, that street is busy. It's a busy street. It's not an alley, and people use it. I use it. And I really don't understand this entitlement mindset of demanding to close a public street for private profit. I don't understand that, and not care about the inconvenience it's causing other people. And I really don't understand it when there's a viable alternative that exists to accomplish your stated goals, such as the sidewalk dining. So I just don't understand this. We can accomplish our stated goals of having outdoor dining and not close the street. To me, that just seems like the common sense, logical solution to this issue. As a resident of the neighborhood, I want to say thank you to the council members that actually voted no, because it does improve my quality of life, and I appreciate them standing up for this issue. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Paul Price, 208 Walnut. Um, and I also, I own that property, and then I live at, um, on Indiana Street. And I drive from Indiana Street over to 11th Street every day for work. And so I can comment on the tracks that go to Walnut, because I actually take Walnut twice a day to avoid the lights on Illinois, which that could use some improvement. I take Walnut because there's never any cars on Walnut, except me, driving to work and back from work at rush hour. I never have to wait for anybody. I never have to stop. It's just an easy flow. So, also as a property owner on Walnut, I like the outdoor dining there. I love it. I love the activity, the feeling of it. It actually adds to my experience, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Any other comments? Okay, do we have any comments from council members up here?
I'll start off. I'll start us off. Um, yes, just, you know, my comments are, the vote last Monday was not a vote about outdoor dining in general in St. Charles. In fact, I strongly support and enjoy myself outdoor dining, and I think it's actually good for the city. I've made my record public, our public voting record, supports outdoor dining. I've cited eight different examples. Um, last year, I did support the outdoor, um, closing the street. I think that that was the right thing to do at the time. And I believe that in the wake of the COVID pandemic, when our residents and our businesses needed support, I thought that was the right thing to do. Those were extraordinary times, and we did what we could to promote local businesses and the community morale. But I just do not believe that that means that a single business can use a public street forever. Uh, it's a, it's a street, not a patio, not a plaza, and the business may still offer an outdoor dining experience on the north and west sides of its building, where there is sidewalk space per our ordinance. Closing a street that can be used by a, by a single business is bad policy, I believe, and sets a precedent that will undoubtedly cause problems for the city in the future. Additionally, that particular area of the east side will be impacted by closing Walnut. Uh, we are led to believe that the construction on the River East Loss will begin this summer, or in a month or so, and will last throughout the rest of the summer. So the residents on that east side neighborhood could face some real difficulties if Walnut Street is closed in addition to the construction in that area. I want to make clear that I'm very appreciative of the comments I've received from residents, both in favor and against the permit. I also appreciate Steve's candor during last weekend and today. Uh, this was a very difficult decision. Sometimes we have to make difficult decisions that are in the best interest of the city and not popular with everyone. I just believe that keeping Walnut Avenue open was the right thing to do this year.
Thank you. Mr. Lencioni?
You know, I wasn't going to make a comment, but I do, and this is actually to staff, because I think I brought it up last year. Um, talking about Walnut, that's, you know, a public street, but we also have outdoor dining in, you know, in, at the time, very controversial, you know, in the plaza, it was controversial whether we were going to let any private businesses, you know, conduct any business out there. During the pandemic, we decided to. Well, now we're using these temporary permits, geez, that's me, I'm the problem here. Uh, we're using these temporary permits. I want to see for every single one, and one of the reasons I was absolutely in favor of doing this, we need to have permanent proposals, you know, for these spaces, because we can't use, the temporary permitting process is not the forum to have larger... I'm going to turn the phone off. That's me. That's super embarrassing. Um, please turn that off for me. But I want to see proposals for permanent, because I think outdoor dining in the plaza is great. I thought outdoor dining, you know, in some configuration, you know, in that street area was a great idea. We voted to say yes to outdoor dining in a public parking lot that is also incredibly important. You know, it's super inconsistent. I think it was just absolutely bad thinking, and the temporary permitting process is not the place to have those types of policy decisions. So I want to see, you know, this year, I'm going to vote for every outdoor dining permit, but I need by the end of this summer, proposals for all these spaces that are permanent, like a permanent proposal, because temporary permitting is not the place to have this scale of debate. So, um, I think that we should have made a different decision. But hey, this is St. Charles, we're all in it together, and we'll move forward. Thanks so much.
Brian?
Brian?
Thank you. So, so to start out, I echo a lot of the comments my colleague David Petrella just said. So, um, you know, I do, do support outdoor dining citywide. Last week's discussion was not about outdoor dining citywide. So there's a lot of misinformation put out on social media on that. So just to clarify that. Second, this issue was discussed last April, a year ago, and in the minutes, I said I'd like to see different options going forward. And Steve Mayer, I believe, was in attendance at that meeting. Uh, Alderman Sokitis said he would like to see other options going forward. So the ownership and the owner of flagship had one year to bring us some options besides coming in here and demanding the street be turned over to them. So you had plenty of time, and nothing happened. You came in here and made unfounded accusations against myself and my colleague that we had some sort of predisposition for a year, when a year ago, in the minutes, in the minutes, it's documented, we asked for some options, and they weren't brought forward, something, maybe a rooftop experience, maybe a back parking lot, something, just to... So that was put out there for discussion, and nothing happened. Second, in April of 2022, this elected body passed and modified the outdoor cafe and food carts in public places ordinance. This ordinance does not permit outdoor dining on the streets. So if you read the ordinance, it does not permit it. So if you read Section E under the ordinance, I'll read it for you. It says, "The proposed use shall not unreasonably interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic or with access to parked vehicles." That's what the ordinance says. I'm following the ordinance. I feel a sense of obligation to follow that ordinance, and it was passed by this elected body and signed by Mayor Vitak. This was last April of 2022. So why it was on the agenda in the first place is beyond me, why it was even put on the agenda when we shouldn't even be discussing it because the ordinance says we can't. So that's an issue for me. Um, does that not, it doesn't mean I'm not willing to collaborate and work on something, to figure something out. But, you know, it's, it's also about taking into consideration the residents that live in that neighborhood. They seem to get lost in the conversation every time. You know, it's like everybody comes in here, they generalize, and nobody goes over there and talks to the people that live in the neighborhood. I talk to them. They're concerned about Indiana Avenue being closed, a new construction project taking place over there. What happens when Walnut Avenue closes? How does it impact the quality of life for them? You know, I don't want to forget about them. They're important too. It's about striking the right balance. So for me, I'm comfortable with just using the... So for me, I'm comfortable with just using the option of outdoor dining on the sidewalk, it's available now, bring some different options in the future, and let's see what we can do. So that's where I'm at with that.
Yep. First of all, I'll always have the conversation, thanks Steve for acknowledging that, and also, for the record, you reached out to me, right? I mean, you reached out to me. Okay. When I first came on council, there was some clarity that needed to be made for me, and it was. And I had, you know, Mayor DeWitt at the time, and then followed by Mayor O'Gina confirm it for me, that businesses belong to all 10 of us. It doesn't matter what ward you're in, we all have the ownership of the businesses. So businesses don't have individual representation up here, but rather a collective representation. Conversations happen with businesses because neighbors or residents around the businesses have an issue, and that's where the local aldermen get involved. Secondly, follow up to that, I, correct me if I'm wrong, that Aldermen have roughly 5,000-plus constituents. There is no way we're expected to reach out to them. There's two of us, well, he's here someplace, but there's two of us in the second ward, and I couldn't possibly have every scenario in my mind of reaching out to citizens if there's a concern. They all have my number, they all have my email, and I encourage and always did, encourage them to contact me if they have an issue. And that's, if I'm wrong, correct me, or, you know, the new council coming before us, let me know. But that is always, always been, we all own all the businesses, so it's hard to pinpoint to Alder, and to that point, I believe there were four no votes last week, so it's not just on David and Brian, I mean, there were four no votes, so I feel like they're just kind of...
Five.
Oh, sorry, five.
Or breaking the tie.
Yeah, well, yeah, breaking the tie, yeah, 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 sorry. Anyway, so, all that to say, thank you.
So, so, heard a lot from both sides. The reason that I voted in favor of it was, I thought we would be in a better position to allow it, which, from an outdoor dining standpoint, seems to be, you know, the greater drive in the community now, and it certainly has changed, I think, some of the map of St. Charles. I think that people are really impressed with our outdoor dining, and I was always going to vote in favor of it. You know, we could have voted in favor of it, we could have put it in place for the summer, and then we could have, we have the ability to change ordinances. We really, we had that opportunity, it didn't happen with the vote. You know, I think it's unfortunate, because I think we could have voted for it, it could have happened this summer, and we could have continued the discussion for a more permanent solution, and I think that would have allowed people a lot of time to talk, and I, you know, I understand the minute say something about options. I remember talking about, well, we should look at all of them, I think, I think that's not being disingenuous by Brian, or, I think you probably quoted Ron too, I think that they were talking about options. My whole point is, is we could have done that with this in place from a temporary basis and on a go-forward basis, come up with a more permanent solution. So that was what my thought was, take the pressure off, throw the outdoor dining in place, which is what the community really seems to drive for right now, and continue the discussion. So, just not the way it worked out.
Anyone else?
Very humble.
Yeah.
My reason for voting no was simple, is fairness, I think that's a very important thing. If someone else on another street, doesn't have to be even a bar or restaurant, anybody could say with the business, I'd like to close this street for two months so I can show my wares on the street. If we start doing it for one, we have to start doing it for all. I understand we have to vote on each one individually, but if we set a precedent now, we will be stuck with it, and anybody could ask for anything, we'd have to, almost be obligated to give it, and I'm not willing to do that. My, I've had this position before about fairness and about closing streets. I'm just, I don't think it's precedent that I don't want to set, that's my reasoning for it. I'm also not unduly pressured by anybody either, I'd like you to know that too. I take offense to that comment.
Hey, is anyone else going to say? Because I am. Well, actually, we're, we did public comment already. You have to step to the podium then, sir, if you want to come up, you just have to step to the podium to state your name, but let's try to not...
Doug Pepper, just loving to have you, crab apple wing, also co-owner of Pepperd Interiors and Pepperd, in the Pepper line here in downtown. I want you guys to start thinking about the economy, right? I mean, we're not in like the best environment. Think about what this may do to small ownership, other individuals coming into the community. I think, you know, I have a daughter that works for the flagship, may not have a job this summer, which obviously helps our family, send our kid to school with some money in our pockets. So just think about the macroeconomic situation we have in front of us right now, and just think about some of the small business owners that are trying to make any, put some money in their pocket.
Thank you, Mr. Pepperd. So I think we're done with public comment, are we done with all of your personal comments? I'm going to say something. I didn't prepare this, so, I did not grow up here. I grew up in a town that I would, I feel so freaking lucky I live here now, like for my kids, for everyone. And one, I don't want people to lose sight of that, we live in a really great place. It's been a challenge recently because there's unfortunately so much negativity. I don't know how it all happened, it's unfortunate, I've seen it tonight, and I really hope that moving ahead, we can think more broadly. Like you heard terms thrown out at the last council, or last committee meeting about urbanism, walkability, bikeability, all that. We have to think more broadly up here about that, instead of getting into the minutia about street closures and holes in the street. This is our city, and I really feel like we've come a long way since at least I've been here, and do we not want to keep seeing that happen? Like, I want every single business here to succeed, I want our residences to have places to be, and what I've seen recently is just a ton of negativity. My goal from here on out, from right now, is to make, I'm hoping to feed positive energy. Like, that's what I've been trying to do for the past few years, I've only been doing this past, the past few years, I'm not perfect, and I don't get everything right. But what I will say is, I'm really trying to work hard to make this city an amazing place, and I will continue to do that and work with business owners and business owners and residents, and you might not always like the decision, but the goal is to stop getting out of the minutia. I'm hoping after May, and I know what you, we're all referring to here, is that we up here can think broadly about the general growth and direction of the city to make this a great place for people to live, because all of you are in this room for a purpose. And I really think it's not to not collaborate, or at least I'm hoping so, and if anyone is in this room that doesn't want to collaborate, I'm really hoping you're taking a look internally at yourself and saying, what can I do to make this city better? Not what can I do to go backwards or drag people down? I mean, I really hope that's what everybody in here wants. That's what I, that's what I want, that's why I'm sitting here. I'm not sitting here because I get paid, and I'm not sitting here because I want some other political position. I am here to make this city the best place it can be, and I guarantee you, that's the motivation I have. I really hope everyone else into May has the same motivation, and I'm willing to talk to anyone about how they can further collaborate. I am open to collaborate, I'm going to speak on behalf of the city council right now, I'm hoping everyone else is too, because that's the direction I want to move the city come the next two years. And you may not like it, but I'm doing the best I can, and I will tell you, my door is always open. I talk to all of you, most of you have my personal self. So we've talked about that. I'm always open for comments, questions, and the like, and I really hope, and I don't think that city council members should be that open, but however, these individuals should be two-way transparent communication, that's how it should be. And your expectation of that, I think, is rightfully so, just like, I think the expectation of all these people up here should be like, they're here, there to help you. So, I'm sorry I didn't prepare that, but I just want you all to know, that is my goal, is to move forward in a positive way from this seat tonight, the rest of my two years. Okay? Thank you. I don't have, we don't have an executive session, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So me.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni. Nancy, please call the roll.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petulla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Silkitis?
Yes.
Calameres?